Hallelujah. How many are ready for the word of the Lord tonight? If you're ready for the word, why don't you just stand at your feet right now as we welcome Pastor Brian, who's been with us once again and been a blessing to us. We thank the Lord for him. We thank God for his ministry. It's a blessing to have you here tonight, brother Brian. We just want you to go ahead and share everything the Lord's put on your heart tonight.
Check two. There we go. Whoa, hello, hello, hello. Thank you, Lord. Check. Check Norris. Praise God. There we go. We're good now. You may be seated. Thank you very much. It's a privilege and honor to share the word of the Lord again with you. And I want to thank Pastor Rob and Rachel and the family here, the church family, for all your hospitality. And, you know, we've had a good time in the Lord, and tonight will be another good time. The worship's been awesome. The songs have been great and just, we're in the presence. We've had church already, haven't we? Amen? You know why we've had church? Because I can feel the Holy Spirit here. And you don't have church without the Holy Spirit. So praise God. Father, we thank you for your word. We thank you for unction and utterance in the spirit. We thank you, Father, that the anointing destroys jokes and removes burdens, Father. And we welcome the anointing tonight. We welcome the Holy Spirit to move. I thank you for the office you've anointed and appointed me to, Father. I expect to operate in that, Lord. Lord, let my thoughts be your thoughts and my words be your words, Lord. Let every word of the flesh fall to the wayside. Let your name be glorified once again. And we thank you that we serve a God of signs, wonders, and miracles. And we come with anticipation and expectation for what you're gonna do. And we thank you. You said, "Where two or three are gathered in my name, there am I in the midst of them." You're here in our midst, and that's all that matters. God be God in this house, and we'll be careful to give you all the praise, glory, and honor, because you alone are worthy of it all, in Jesus' name. Amen. Well, we've been talking about the armor of God, the defensive armor of God, amen? Because there's five that are defensive and two that are offensive. And hopefully, we can get through this. Praise God. We've got long-winded preachers not getting very far into these messages. But anyway, it's all been good, the Holy Spirit. We want to take Holy Spirit detours, don't we, if we have to? And anyway, we finished off yesterday, and we talked about the belt of truth, having your girds lined with truth and how truth holds everything together. Amen? And then we talked about the breastplate of righteousness, how God wants us to be right. Righteousness should always be before us. It guards our heart. And the key thing about righteousness is being right with God. Amen? Don't worry about pleasing man. Worry about pleasing God. Always be right with God. Amen? And that's one of the most important things, amen, is always being right with the Lord. And he is our righteousness. He is our truth. He is the truth. He is our righteousness. And remember, all of the armor is Jesus. Amen? And so, we put on Christ, and we're dressed to kill. Amen? And so, we're gonna pick up in Ephesians 6:15, "And having our feet shod with the preparation of the gospel of peace." The gospel makes us sure-footed in the Lord and stabilizes our feet, so we can be grounded, not wavering about. Amen? And what was the greatest thing you felt when you got saved was the peace of God. Amen? And when we have peace within, we have peace without. Peace in, peace out. A lot of these hipsters say peace out. I say peace in, baby. Amen? Peace in, peace out. You got Jesus in, he's gonna come out. Amen? And the cross represents peace, peace with God and peace with man. We can live at peace with God and peace with man. And the Bible says, "Live at peace with all men, if possible." We do our best to live at peace. Amen? And that was the greatest announcement that was ever made in history, was when the angels came in Shepherd's Field and ministered to the shepherds there and made the greatest announcement, "Glory to God in the highest and on earth, peace, goodwill towards men." Goodwill is God's will towards men. And he wanted the gospel of peace is to be in our hearts. Amen? We live in peace. We pursue peace. We're guided by peace, because Jesus is the prince of peace. Jesus destroyed Satan so we could have peace. Amen? He is our peace, and he took on all of our confusion. Amen? And so, we could have inner peace as well. And he's the prince of peace, and we're grounded in peace. And the kingdom of God is neither meat nor drink but righteousness and peace, amen, in the Holy Ghost. Amen? And so, we live at peace with God, and we're blessed because of it. And, you know, Matthew, Mark, Luke, and John, they all have different themes. Matthew's symbolic of the trespass offering. Mark's symbolic of the sin offering. But Luke, he's symbolic of the peace offering. John, the burnt offering. But they all represent certain offerings. Amen? And we want to walk in peace, which is what the angels announced, peace on earth, plus peace in these earthen vessels. Amen? We come from the dust of the ground, and we have that treasure inside of us, the peace of God. Glory be to God for his peace. Isn't that awesome? How many times have we been in turmoil, and all of a sudden, we've had the overwhelming peace of God? Amen? And the peace will just keep you on cruise control, because he is peace, and he brings peace. And I wanted to share something with you. You know, the Bible says, "Blessed are the peacemakers, for they are the sons of God." Jesus was the ultimate peacemaker. He made peace with us, with God. Amen? A lot of times, I'd been at death's bed with many people, and I said, "Are you at peace with God?" You know, "Have you made your peace with God?" But Jesus made peace with us, with God. Amen? And there's a difference between a peacemaker and a peacekeeper. Canada's known as a peacekeeping nation. I don't like that. I'd rather be called a peacemaking nation. A peacekeeper will compromise to keep peace. A peacemaker will speak the truth to bring peace. Jesus went to war to bring peace with us. Amen? A peacemaker, amen, and a peacemaker, even a good preacher, will tell you what you need to hear, not what you want to hear. Amen? He won't compromise. He'll speak the truth in love. Amen? Tell you what you need to hear, not what you want to hear, so you can live at peace in your hearts. Because when we get convicted by God, the Holy Spirit's our steering committee in our heart. He steers us and guides us, amen, and leads us into all truth. And you know what? The enemy wants to, he wants you out of that peace. For God's not the author of confusion, but of peace, as in all the churches of the saints. He rules in peace. There should be peace in the house of God. There should be peace in the hearts of the people of God. Amen? Because Jesus is ruling. And when you go into confusion, the enemy's at work, and he confounds things and brings confusion. And he murkies the waters. But God's the God of peace, and he wants us living in peace. Amen? He leads us into peace. Hallelujah. He's a good God. Praise God. And it says, it says here in Romans 10:15, "How shall they preach, except they be sent, as it is written? How beautiful are the feet of them that preach the gospel of peace and bring glad tidings of good things." You know, people have heard a lot of preaching on sin, condemnation, and, you know, they haven't heard much on righteousness, which brings peace. Amen? We've beaten people up with the word of God and called them nothing but dirty old sinners, when, you know what? That's what you were as well. That's what I was. Amen? And, you know, "But for the grace of God, there go I." I am what I am by the grace of God. "And he revealed his love for me," amen, "and I accepted his love," who is Jesus. Amen? Everything I need is in Jesus. And, you know, a lot of times, we preach condemnation instead of righteousness, which is the good news. God's not mad at you. Every hang-up was hung up at Calvary's cross 2,000 years ago. He loves you. "Just as I am, I come to thee." Amen? Broken. You don't have nothing to give God, other than yourself and your brokenness and your sin, and he'll robe you with his righteousness. You give him your sin, and he robes you with your righteousness. Amen? And you have to receive it. It's a free gift. Amen? It's God's gift, and he'll bring peace within your heart. Because the enemy will confound you. But God wants us being in peace. And you know, the Old Testament said, "Let God arise and his enemies be scattered." Every time they lifted the ark of God, they would say, "Let God arise and his enemies be scattered." And there'd be four priests on that ark, and the ark represented the very presence of God. And there'd be four poles that went through the ark of the covenant. And those poles, there'd be four rings, were symbolic of the peace of God going to the four corners of the earth. And one day, that will happen. They say peace, peace, but there is no peace until the prince of peace comes, and he steps down on the Mount of Olives, and it splits in two. And then he's gonna rule with a rod of iron, and there will be peace. Hallelujah. Amen? There'll be peace. And he brings peace to us, so we can live at peace with each other. Praise God. And we have Jesus in our hearts, and we live in peace. Amen? Hallelujah. I'm glad that I have the peace of God, because Satan used to confound me. And when you're confounded, he's the one confounding you. God is not the author of confusion, but of peace. Amen? He wants you in peace. He wants you living in peace. People are looking for peace, and they can't get any peace. You know that? I'll tell you why, if you want to hear. There's gonna be a thousand-year millennial reign of peace. You know that? That'll be awesome, won't it? Because Jesus is gonna come and make war. He's gonna be the ultimate peacekeeper. He's gonna come and make war in Armageddon, clear everything up, and then we're gonna live in peace, because he's a peacemaker. Amen? Hallelujah. And we're not gonna compromise. Amen? We're gonna live in peace. We're gonna be peacemakers as well. Praise God. Hallelujah. See, us being a peacekeeping country, we've gotten ourselves into trouble, I believe. But being a peacemaking country, things are good. Amen? When we obey God and his way of doing things, we're blessed. Amen? And that's the way he wants us to live. We preach the gospel of peace through the good news, not condemnation. Eh? We preach love, God's peace. Hallelujah. And, you know, when God's with you, he's walking with you through every valley of life. "Yea, though I walk through the valley of the shadow of death, I will fear no evil, for thou art with me. Thy rod and staff comfort me." We have peace in those troubled times of life. We have peace in those dark places of the Lord. He's a valley walker. He'll never leave you nor forsake you. He's always with you, trying to bring peace into your life. Amen? And that's a beautiful thing. And you know, shalom means what? Peace. He's the God of shalom. God wants shalom in your home. This is your home. This is God's home. He wants shalom in your home. And that shalom means nothing missing, nothing broken, walking in the fullness of your blessings for our lives, flourishing in our souls. He wants our minds at peace. Praise God. Peace with God. Amen? Isn't that awesome? And I want to share a scripture with you, because we can see the world. There's a drug epidemic going on right now, because people are trying to find peace, and they can't. And it's part of the works of the flesh in Galatians 5:20. One of the works of the flesh means pharmakia, which is witchcraft. Pharmakia, and the root word of that means pharmacy, and it comes from medication, and it means magic, sorcery. And its root meaning also means poisoning people. And people are being poisoned on the installment plan, looking for peace. But the devil never comes through with what he promises you. Remember that. He never comes through with what he promises. He always comes up short and brings torment. And it also says in Revelations 9:21, "Neither they repented they of their murders, nor of their sorceries, nor of their fornications, nor of their thefts." Sorcery's also means pharmakia, which means pharmacy. And that comes, like I said, from medication, magic, sorcery, and its root meanings. You know, I've got friends that have gone to their doctor, and they ask them what kind of drug they want. It's like going to a dealer, man. I'm a hope dealer, not a dope dealer. Amen? You know, they ask them what they want, you know? It's crazy, you know? But listen to this. Isaiah 26, verse 3, says, "Thou wilt keep him in perfect peace, whose mind has stayed on thee." You know what? See, God promises perfect peace if our mind has stayed on him. And God can't lie. If we keep our mind on him and the things of God, you know that? We'll live in peace, and that's where he wants us to live. He wants us to abide in peace. "Great peace have they that love the law, and nothing shall offend them." If you really love the law, and the Lord is the law, he's the law. Amen? He's the word. If you love the law, you love the word of God, and you get the word into you, you won't be offended. "Great peace have they who love the law, and nothing shall offend them." Because peace is reigning, and nothing will disrupt that peace, amen, in your hearts. And it goes right down to the souls of your feet. You walk in peace. You bring peace. I remember one time, I was at our trailer, and I was going through hell. You know, when you're in the misery, I mean, the ministry, sometimes you get attacked and hard-pressed on every side. And I was going through it. I had everything going on at once. It just seemed like my head was in a vise. And I was crying, getting cranked around. You know what I'm talking about. Amen? And people inside attacking you, people on the outside attacking you, sickness attacking you, finances being attacked, and all these things, and people lying about you, whatever. And I remember, I went down, I took the kids down to get a treat at the store. And I was sitting outside, and this lady comes up to me, and she had no idea, she wasn't even a believer, I don't think. She had no idea what I was going through, you know, and you're just wrestling and warring in your mind and speaking against things. And she goes, "Can I ask you a question?" And I said, "What is that? What would you like to know?" She goes, "I just want to know how you're so peaceful all the time." And I'm like, "Wow." But you see, it's like, you know, when they were baptized in the Holy Spirit, and they all had, you know, tongues of fire, and they had fire on their heads? Nobody could notice it but each other. You didn't, they didn't notice it, but somebody else noticed it. And you see, they can see, that's the anointing that she was looking at. "Sustaining me through difficulties, and God will keep us. He'll never leave us nor forsake us. We'll ride in peace." Amen? We'll live in peace. And situations, and sometimes, there may be things going on in your head, but that doesn't, you're still in the peace of the Lord. You're still in the joy of the Lord. You're still in the hands of the Lord. And he's always with you and always for you. I'm gonna move on. I know I'm being a little quick tonight, but we're gonna move to the shield of faith now. Ephesians 6:16, "Above all, taking the shield of faith, where wish you shall be able to quench all the fiery darts of the wicked one." Isn't that awesome? It says, "You'll be able to quench all the fiery darts of the wicked one." Faith cometh by what? Hearing, and hearing by what? The word of God. Faith cometh by hearing, and hearing, and hearing, and hearing, and hearing, by the word of God. Guess what? Fear comes by hearing, from Satan. Doubt comes by hearing, from Satan. And you see, sometimes, remember I said, "We process 1,500 words per minute"? That's a lot going on up here. Amen? Processing a lot of thoughts, and some of them become subconscious, right? And I believe you think about them when you're not even thinking about them. When you acknowledge that, they're there. And I believe that's what the enemy will have you do when he gets ministering to you on doubt. It'll hinder you from believing, because you've been listening to him more than you have God. And that's why we need to speak what God speaks over our life, through the shield of faith. And remember, the soldiers, they had a shield that was probably two feet wide and four feet long, and it saturated, it soaked before battle all night in water, covered in leather, and it was made of wood. And then they would walk to the enemy, and there would be like a wall, mobile wall on the ground. But they would turn the shield up like that. They would be shooting the fiery darts at them, and they would penetrate into the wood, but they would be extinguished because of the water in the wood. And the word of God that you saturate and soak in will extinguish the fiery darts from hell, from the enemy. Amen? That's what they'll do. The word of God. You store that word of God up, and you just keep meditating on the word of God. You're building a shield of faith. So if you could see everybody's shield in the spirit, some of them have a little thimble, right? Sewing thimble, you know what I'm talking about? And others might have the one like a garbage can lid. And others might have a great big, huge one that covers the whole family, their business, everything they do, their ministry. Amen? Hallelujah. But faith comes by hearing and hearing by the word of God. And you marinate yourself in the word of God. You meditate on the word of God. Yeah, you meditate. And when it says, "Meditate the word of God," when he told Joshua, "Meditate on this word day and night," he was saying, "Mutter the word to yourself." Mutter the word to yourself. Regurgitate it. Amen? And that's what we gotta do. We speak it over and over and over, because, "I'm what God says I am. I'm not what the devil says I am." People are doing what the devil's telling them to do out in the world. We're doing what God's telling us to do in here. That's why we live in victory, and that's why we want people saved, sanctified. Amen? And free. And God's a bondage breaker. And you're a mighty warrior in Jesus, and he is in you. And when you pray for people, you're releasing the power of God. It's not you. It's Jesus in you. And when you believe, you're releasing the life. You're a freedom fighter. You're freedom fighters. There's firefighters, but you're a freedom fighter and a firefighter. Hallelujah. And then when you stretch your hands out, you're stretching out the long arm of the law. I thought that was a good one. Amen? And in the name of Jesus, because that's the authority that is given you. And if you believe it, you'll receive it, and it'll manifest. Amen? You know, I told my church a little while ago, I said, "You know what? I go out and see signs, wonders, and miracles all the time when I go out and preach in different places." And they're like, "I go, you know something? You guys become familiar with me." It's just old PB shooting his mouth off again. Amen? And they forget about being anointed. He's anointed. I'm anointed. I've been anointed to an office. And I can preach the same message that he'll preach, and you may have heard it 10 times, but now you're ready to hear it, because it's coming from somebody else. Hello, somebody? Don't shout me down. You gotta honor the man of God. He's been given to you from God, and he hears from God, and he gives you what God gives him, but you better be seeking God too. If you're only reading your Bible once a week, you're backslidden. Sure got quiet in here. You know what? When you get up and you have a craving to read the Bible or pray, that's your spirit man going, "Feed me." Hello? Man, you don't like this type of preaching. I gotta stay in this vein a bit more. No, because that's how you feed yourself, and then you start to hear from God. You come in and you hear what the under shepherd's saying from the chief shepherd, and you're all, "Wow, I was just studying on that." Praise God. That's confirmation. I'm hearing from God. Eh? Praise God. That's what it's all about. And you've got to soak yourself and saturate yourself in the word of God. Look at Galatians 2:20. It says, "I am," Paul said, "I am crucified with Christ. Nevertheless, I live, yet not I. But Christ liveth in me, and the life which I now live in the flesh, I live by the faith of the Son of God, who loved me and gave himself for me." Jesus gave me his faith. We've all been given a measure of faith, it says in Romans. Nobody got any more faith than anybody else. You are all given the same measure. If I had a cup, and I've, you know, everybody accepted Jesus, they'd all come up and accept Jesus, and they'd all be poured the same amount of faith. It's whatever you do with the faith that God has given you. Faith cometh by hearing, and hearing by the word of God. And that's why you'll see some young Christians come in, and they're just hungry for the things of God, and they'll grow by everybody else, because faith cometh by hearing. And God honors faith. Without faith, it's impossible to please him. Amen? You live by faith. Faith is your lifeline. You don't feed your faith, you're gonna die. You're gonna dry up. And it's nobody's fault but yours. I'm telling you, I've gone to seniors' homes where Christians were on fire for God. They went into seniors' residence, didn't read their Bible anymore. And next thing you know, there were foul words coming out of their mouth. There was anger manifested. Why? Because the word of God preserves you. The word of God keeps you. The word of God heals you. The word of God liberates you. It's called the engrafted word. And the word works. When you work the word, the word works. If you don't work the word, it doesn't work. "And you shall know the truth, and the truth shall set you free." It's not the truth you hear, it's the truth you know. Because if we, everybody's heard truth, they'd all be free. But it's the truth that you know intimately. Amen? It's not the truth, and you can resist truth all your life. There's Christians, they go to church every week, and they just resist everything. You know, you can come in with a preconceived idea and think, "Well, I want this." Meanwhile, your mind's set on something else. But where the spirit of the Lord is, there's liberty. Whatever the spirit's doing now is what God wants to do to bring liberty. But you're thinking, you want something else preached and taught on. But God has something right now, because faith is now. And you can do that all your life. "Whoa, I wish we were like this. I wish we had a move like that." And you can be living in yesteryears, but faith is now. God is now. He said, "I am that I am," because he's the God of now. He's the God of now, not yesterday. Forget about yesterday. You know, we had a great time yesterday. I'm not worried about yesterday. I'm worried about right now, what God's doing now. Angels are moving now. Angels are ascending and descending now. Holy Spirit is here now. The power of God's here now. I'm not worried about what he's doing next week. I'm concerned about what he's gonna do right now. Faith cometh by hearing, and hearing by the word of God. And when you hear what the spirit's saying, he said, "He who has an ear, let him hear what the spirit's saying." And it's what the spirit's saying. You know, sometimes, we'll go, "Oh, man, they should have been at church. That message was for them." No, it wasn't. It was for you. That's the devil stealing. Immediately, the sower sows the seed, and the thief comes what? He comes to steal the seed. You know why? Because he knows the power of that seed. It's gonna take, it's gonna take root, germinate, and cause growth. And that's why, even though you don't understand, you keep sowing that seed into your life. You keep sowing that seed, and you're changing. You may not even notice it yourself, but other people will notice there's a change in your life. Amen? I'm like, chill, baby. You know what? I don't worry about anything anymore. My kid, I went outside one day, and I had my pajamas on, and the kids are going, "Get your clothes on. What are you going outside for?" I said, "You get as old as me, you don't care what you look like." I might even go up to Walmart. Amen? One time, our lawnmower broke down, and I went to the church and got the ride-on lawnmower. And I drove it all the way down to my house and cut my lawn, and then I was driving it back. I live about four, eight blocks from the church, and I'm driving it back, and my daughter's with her friends in a car, and they go, "Isn't that your dad?" I'm free, baby. I don't care what people think about me. I'm gonna be free in Jesus. Amen? I don't care if you don't like the way I worship. That's the way I worship. Amen? I don't care the way I dance. I shout. I do whatever, you know? I don't care what you do either. I'm not focusing on you. I'm focusing on Jesus. Man, I've heard people, you know, leave a church, and the guy preached a powerful message, and before you get out, I didn't really like the tie that guy had on. I'm like, "Ooh." Satan's at work before you get out the door. Amen? Some guy gave me a conference series, right? And I listened to the whole thing, and there was like eight speakers on it. And the biggest revelation I got was that of the guy that had a speech impediment, you know? And so, the guy, I gave him the series back, and I was chewing on what the guy had said. That's what I was ministered to. And he says to me, "What'd you think of that series?" I says, "Man, it was awesome. There was a lot of good nuggets in that." And he goes, "You know, the only thing I didn't like was that one guy that had that speech impediment thing going on." And I'm, "See, I didn't hear no speech impediment. I heard the Holy Ghost speaking through that guy." You see? Don't look at the natural. Look at the spirit. Eh? Remember Moses? He had a speech impediment. He said, "Here I am. The Lord sent him." Aaron, remember? You know? You know, but God took care of that, didn't he, over time? Because he wanted his heart. Hey? Praise God. So you build that shield of faith up, my friends. God dealt to every one of us a measure of faith. It's up to you. Don't think this person's anointed more than you. We're anointed to offices. And the gift that you have will blossom and bloom as you feed your faith. Whatever you, God has given you to do, you keep feeding your faith, and you'll grow in that. You'll just unfold. Remember Jesus? Remember the disciples in John? It said, you know, he got frustrated with him. He said, how long must I be with you? And then next thing you know, when they got baptized in the Holy Spirit, it said he brought all things to their remembrance. Everything they needed to know, he brought to their remembrance. So don't think things are boring when you're reading something, because it'll come to your remembrance, because the Holy Spirit is putting in the spirit in the archives of your heart, and he can pull it out whenever he wants. I've been preaching before, and I've had scriptures come to me, and I just start speaking them, because I can see them in my spirit, and I just start speaking them out. And then sometimes I'll go home and look them up right away to make sure I didn't misinterpret them. And they're word for word, and I haven't thought of them or spoke them in years. Amen? Because he's got a little Holy Ghost violin cabinet here, down here in my spirit, man. And he can pull out whatever I want. God said, I can have you preach for a month, a year on one scripture if I want. Amen? Praise God. We're never gonna run out of Jesus. We're never gonna run out of revelation. So you build that shield of faith. Because that's the one that you can build. Amen? And Jesus gave you the faith. He paid a price for you to have faith, and utilize that faith. That faith will move mighty mountains. That faith will do great things. When God gives you a vision, you know what? When you get a vision from God, Abraham got a vision. He's our father of faith, right? God birthed something in the deadness of his soul. And he believed what God said, and it was counted as righteousness unto him. And he called those things which be not as though they were. Hey? He said, I am the Father. His name even said who he was. His name was changed, because he was the Father. He is, amen? It hadn't happened, but he is, amen? Because God said he is. And you know, God sees us in the spirit. He's seen Saul as the apostle Paul. He's seen Simon Peter Barjona as Peter the Rock. Hello? He's seen Abram as Abraham. Hey, hello? We got a new name in heaven. He sees us succeeding. He's seen Gideon as a mighty man of valor. And he said, the angels said, you mighty man of valor, and Gideon's like, what's she talking about, Willis? Hey? You know what I mean? Some of you older people get that, but anyway. But you know, and that's how God, that's how God sees us. He sees us coming into our full potential. Pastors look through the binoculars. I see what you can be. And I keep prodding you and pushing you into what you should do. You know, I remember the first time our worship leader, he's awesome. You know, I said, well, you're leading worship, man. He's like, huh? He's gonna lead worship, and he sounded like an old tractor up there. You know them old tractors you used to have to crank to get going? He was spitting and sputtering and, you know, missing it, and I was kinda giggling at him, you know? But I knew what was in him. God showed me what was in him, and I was gonna bring it out. Because his heart was right, and I just kept yanking and getting him in there. And then his wife, and they're both awesome worship leaders. Amen? You don't be afraid. You step out, amen? Even Jeremiah, when God calls you to do something, you don't look in their eyes. You know why? Because their emotions will dictate to you. You preach what God tells you to preach. You say what God tells you to say. You do what God tells you to do, because he's the one that called you, and he's the one you have to answer to, you preachers out there. Preach the word, amen? Don't be flakes. Don't please people. Please God. Speak the word of God. It's the word of God that's gonna set them free. Not your stories. Hello? See, some ministers, they preach like, it sounds like they're reading out of the Funkin' Wagnall. Hello, somebody? You know what I'm talking about? Preaching to your head, not to your spirit. You need spirit to spirit. Deep calleth unto deep. Amen? Hello? And some people are dying by the degree. Hello? He's not coming for the frozen chosen. He said, when I return, will I find what? His faith. His deposit he made in us. And guess what? There's people that get saved. They're not utilizing their faith. You know that? And they're gonna be left behind. You'll know where you're at when the trumpet blows, and the church is gone. And guess what? God gave me this a little while ago. It might upset you, but it's okay. I'm leaving tonight. I'm leaving on a jet plane. And I don't know if I'll be back again. That's my Hyundai, little jet plane. That's my chariot, amen? And, but the Lord showed me. Some people that never study the word of God or do anything, they just go from meeting to meeting to meeting. You know anybody like that? Wherever there's a special speaker, they go there. They don't read their Bible or anything. They just go to church and get, you know what you're doing? You're stealing oil. Hello? The ten virgins were wise. Five were wise, five were foolish. You know what? You gotta get your own oil. You can get some of mine while I'm preaching tonight, and you can get the pastor's too. But you better have enough oil in your canister to get you off this ground. Hello? Yeah. I've even said that some preachers, they laugh because they never thought of it that way. They started asking me about something, and I said, get your own oil. Just kidding. But that's what God wants. He's coming back for those that are on fire. Amen? They got, they're running on the oil. When you're running in the oil, things go smooth. Amen? Hallelujah! That went over good. Praise God. Moving right along. Now, look at 1 John 5:4, for whatsoever is born of God overcometh the world. And this is the victory that overcometh the world, even our faith. Maybe you're wondering why you're not overcoming? Because you're not feeding your faith. You're not building your shield of faith. You're not living in faith. The just shall live by faith. If you're not in faith, you're not living. You get up and read the word of God. It's the highest form of reality on planet Earth. Is he grabbing a flag back there? He better not be. Praise God. I'm just getting warmed up, man. I'm burning the midnight oil, I think, tonight. I'm just kidding. Moving right along here. I wanna get through this. Now, we're gonna look at the helmet of salvation. There was a lot more stuff there I could've dropped on you, but I wanna get this done, the defensive part of it. And then we'll go through the offensive part of it. But the helmet of salvation. You see, all of these weapons, you know, defensive weapons that we have is Jesus. Okay? The helmet of hope, the helmet of salvation. Ephesians, take the helmet of salvation, the helmet of salvation, the helmet of hope. What's it do? It protects our thought life. It's very important, because the Bible says in Proverbs 23:7, as a man thinketh, so is he. So what's coming in will cause you to be. Whatever you're thinking on, you will act out, amen? And you have to protect yourself. Hope is always positive. Hope loves, amen? Love hopes all things. Hope is a goal setter. Hope turns into experience. See? Faith turns into sight. Hope turns into experience, but God's love is eternal. Amen? So we need to live in hope. We have to have the mind of hope. Don't let your mind be cluttered with outside of things. Hope turns into experience. Now, faith is the substance of things hoped for. See? Faith is the foundation of things hoped for. Are you standing on the word? Can you see what God says about a situation? See? Because then you're living in hope. Jesus went to the cross, because he went in hope of seeing us come into the family of God. You know that? That's what he did. He endured it, you know? And what does Jesus says in Psalm 23? Thou anointest my head with oil. God anoints our thought life. We have the mind of Christ, and when we have the mind of Christ, we're looking through the helmet of hope. Through the mind of Christ, not at what we see. We're looking at what God says, and we can see what God sees, and speak what God sees, and watch it come to manifestation. Calling those things which be not as though they were. That's how God operates, and God wants us to do that. There was no light, and God said, let there be light. And there was light. And God, we're made in his image. He wants us to call those things which be not as though they were. Jesus spoke everything the Father told him to speak while he was on earth. And there was manifestation after manifestation. And Jesus wants us to speak what he speaks, to see the manifestation and the power of God. That's why he used the fig tree as an example. Remember, he cursed the fig tree, and it withered and died. And the next day, they walked by, and Peter said, master, look at the fig tree. It withered and died. It withered and died the very moment that Jesus spoke to it. You know, when you're binding the powers of hell over your family's lives, those demons are bound, even though you can't see them. They're bound. They're disrupted. Because it says, whatsoever ye shall bind on earth shall be bound in heaven. Whatsoever ye loose on earth shall be loose from heaven. Whatsoever you forbid, that heaven forbids, will be forbidden on earth. Hallelujah! Amen? And I believe that we will get so caught up in the presence of God, in unity with God, and what he's doing, getting the mind of God united in the mind of God. When we all have the mind of God, we're all gonna be thinking the way God thinks. And when people come in here, and they need a touch from God, we're already primed, baby. Amen? Because the spirit of a man is a candle unto the Lord. One candle in a room isn't very bright, is it? But when you get everybody all fired up, his ministers are a flame of fire. Amen? Yeah. His ministers are a flame of fire. And we should be pyromaniacs for Jesus, setting the world ablaze. Amen? Yeah. We're not, you know, we're not dead. If you're going to a church that's dead, leave. I give you permission, in Jesus's name. Tell them Pastor Brian said, leave. It's dead. D-E-A-D. Dead. Amen? Dry. Hello? Three hymns and a hur, and a sermonette. I ain't got no sermonettes. You wanna hear the word of God, amen? You wanna hear the word of God, and it'll challenge you. It'll change you. It'll stir your spirit up. Amen? And you need the word of God, and you need to be thinking the way God thinks. And that's by the, through the word of God. You need to have the mind of Christ. And if you've lost the mind of Christ, come back to your senses. Yeah, your spiritual senses. And don't be a flake and a kooky Christian that's dreaming and fantasizing things outside of the will of God. Hello, somebody? I got Christians telling me that Trump's still the president. I said, man, he's doing a pretty crummy job. You know why? Because they've heard these things, and they speak them and believe them, and they end up prophesying all kinds of kooky, crazy things. Because if God gives you something to speak, it'll come to pass. Amen? It'll manifest under that anointing and under that authority. And when you get the mind of God in prayer, and you start praying what God tells you to pray, things happen. Things happen, man. Seriously. And you know, you little old ladies that are sitting down in your rocking chairs praying, and you've been praying, and you've been seeing things in the spirit, and different children have been coming to you, and relatives and friends, guess what? They're getting lined up. Amen? God's got their number, and you're praying them in, and the Holy Ghost, shakabakito, and the words that you're praying will get through to them. And they might be in a place, and all of a sudden, God is just gonna touch them, and he's gonna relieve them and set them free, and they're gonna come running to Jesus. It'll be his time. It'll be his time. Don't beat them up. Don't browbeat them. Love them. You've preached the truth to them. Just love them. Show the love of God. Live the love of God. Let the love ooze out of you. Amen? People know that they're not right with God. Just keep loving people. I'm no man's judge. I love everybody. I don't care what color your hair is, what you believe, what you do, how you dress, if you're transgender, lesbian, homosexual, drug addict. I love you! I want Jesus on the inside, because he's the one that'll change the outside. Nobody can change you. The Holy Ghost comes to bring change. Therefore, if any man be in Christ, he's a new creation. Old things are passed away, and all things become new. He's the bondage breaker. He'll break those bondages and set them free. You just keep praying if they're on your heart. Amen? You just keep praying and calling those things which be not as though they were. And you see them the way God seen, the way that God seen Saul, who became Paul. You see them the way Peter became Peter the Rock, Abram, Abraham. Hello, somebody? Amen? And he called us to do things. Look at yourself as a success story, because you are. God saved you. He didn't waste any time. You're precious in his eyes, and he made an investment in you. He's made an investment in you. He told me, if you don't believe in yourself, nobody's gonna believe in you. You better believe in yourself. Hello? If you don't believe in yourself, nobody's gonna believe you. You believe in yourself, because Jesus is in you. Amen? And he loves you. Amen? I love you. Praise God. We love people. We don't judge people. That's all the church has been famous for, is running around judging everybody. Man, I've been going to NA meetings and AA meetings lately, hanging out with all these guys. And they're bad. Some of them are bad. Hey, my kind of people. And man, they just start coming to church now. I didn't even tell them, you know? Some people tell them I'm a minister, but I don't, I just tell them that. And they're just starting to come to church. Some of them are there all the time. One guy's not going, because I'm not there right now, but I'll deal with that later. But you know what? They're getting touched by God. They're getting blessed by God. I'm just preaching the word, just showing them love, man, ministering to them. Yeah. One guy relapsed and OD'd, and he had an out-of-body experience, or something happened to him. And he said, I can't figure out why, but I have no desire for drugs now. No desire. Praise God, man. No desire. Snap, crackle, pop. Amen? Praise God. You know, and people are coming. They need us to love them, man. And you know, I sit in their meetings, and I hear about the way the church talks about people. Not good. You know why? Because what they're saying is a fact. They're just condemning everybody. You need to be loving people. Remember where you came from, too. I'm speaking to myself, man. I'm never gonna forget where I came from. Amen? I'm no better than anybody. I'm no better than the guy on the street, man. You know that? I help people all the time on the street. I give them stuff with no strings attached, just to show the love of God. You know, I got a friend, a guy I've been helping for about four years now. And you know, he had a mental breakdown or something. He was an accountant at one time. And now he has, you know, he has a fixed income, and he hardly has any money, but his name's Larry. Pray for him. And you know, I've been loving on this guy for a long time, and I've been ministering to him. And sometimes he shuts down, and sometimes he's open, and I just keep blessing him, you know? And he's always, he runs out of money, and he says, can you lend me some money? So I lent him money, and then one time, he got up to, you know, a hundred bucks he owed me, right? And I'm thinking, wow, you know, Larry, where are you? Anyway, and so next thing you know, he finds where I live. He's at my house, knocking on the door. He goes, hey, I got your money. I'm like, wow. I got no problem showing that guy love and helping him, huh? Because one day, I keep praying for him all the time. Every time I give him money, I say, Lord, bless him. Bless him. Bless him. Bless him. Amen? And I don't care if he pays me or not, but you know, he's a good man, and I wanna help him. Well, there was another guy the other day. I helped him out. He was out in front of my house, going through our recycle bin, and I gave him a care packet that I had. And I wasn't home, and next thing you know, he come back two days later, knocking on the door. My wife opens the door, and he goes, where's that guy that was? I want another one of them for my friends. But praise God, man. Just keep sowing. Amen? Keep sowing. For God so loved... "For God so loved the world, for God so loved the world, He gave His only-begotten Son." God's a giver. You should be a giver. Some Christians, you need a crowbar to get into their wallet. Hello, somebody? They're tighter than bark to a tree, paint on a wall. Come on, you know what I'm talking about, but I'm looking out for my, I'm just being a good steward. Hey, I know people that have gone to the Lord with millions in the bank and never did nothing with their money for the Lord. Sure is quiet in here now. I should take up an offering for myself right now. Amen? Just kidding. Amen, one guy says. Amen. Praise God. Moving right along. I'm getting out of here. Amen? So we have to have the Word of God in us to be transformed. Romans 12:2. "Be not conformed to this world; see, the Word of God transforms you. But be transformed by the renewing of your mind, that you may prove what is right, good, acceptable, perfect will of God." You see? And that's what God does. Our thoughts should be God's thoughts, God-inspired, not Satan-inspired. And for time's sake, you know, you can look up the scripture in 1 Thessalonians 5:8, "The helmet of hope of salvation." See, hope sees the plans of God. Hope sees the purpose of God. Hope sees the will of God coming to pass. You know? If you want to know what it is, it's the Word that's God's will. Now look at Jesus when He was, in Hebrews 12, verse 2. "Looking unto Jesus, the Author and Finisher of our faith." If we don't feed our faith, how's He going to finish what He started? Hello? "The Author and Finisher of our faith, who for the joy that was set before Him endured the cross, despising the shame, and is set down at the right hand of the throne of God." See? Jesus was looking through the helmet of hope of salvation for all and endured the cross. Jesus was looking beyond the cross in hope. Amen? We need to look beyond the cross that we bear in hope. Hello? Amen? And that's what we need to do. There's a scripture I wanted to share with you here about, about Jesus in Isaiah, if I can, yeah, here it is here. Isaiah 59:17. Now, Isaiah is all about the Messianic prophet, right? He prophesied the most about Jesus coming. And listen to what he says. Isaiah 59:17. "And a helmet of salvation was upon His head." See, Jesus was looking through the Father's thoughts for the salvation plan. Hello? Now we're looking through the thoughts of Jesus, who is the Word of God for the salvation plan. I thought that was deep. I like that. God gave me that one. Amen? And that's what we're doing. We need, that's how we need, we need to see things. Hey? The way God sees them, because that's the ability that He gave us, and we need to do that. And you know, sometimes we all get challenged. The Bible says, "Hope deferred makes the heart sick, but when the desire cometh, it is a tree of life." The Bible says, "Delight yourself also in the Lord," right? "And he shall give unto thee the desires of thine heart." God, when you live tight with God, He can impregnate you with His desires. Yeah. He can impregnate you with His desires, and you can call those things which be not as though they were, and they'll manifest. Okay? I'm just going to be brief because I want to, I want to finish off with the last two, two things, and I'm just going to shoot from the hip. Is that all right? Hello, somebody? Yeah. The sword of the Spirit, right? Which is the Word of God. That's our offensive weapons. All these other weapons are defensive. Jesus is our defense, right? He's got us covered. And notice there's no weapons on the back. They're all on the front. Right? He's got our back, and He wants us moving ahead. Hey? He takes no desire in those that draw back. We're always moving ahead. Amen? "No man having put his hand to the plow and looking back is fit for the kingdom of God." You keep moving ahead. And then there's the sword of the Spirit, which is the Word of God. It's called the two-edged sword. One side deals with sin, and one side deals with sickness. Amen? And one side come out of God's mouth, and one side comes out of your mouth. And it cuts the enemy to ribbons. Amen? It's a two-edged sword. It's the Word of God. You have to wield the Word of God. You know, God's got us covered, but we have to do what He says. We have to wield the Word of God. "His word is not my word like a hammer," saith the Lord, "or like a fire, like a hammer that breaks the rock into pieces." What does a hammer have to do? It has to, it has to continually be smashed into the object to break it, doesn't it? The Word of God is like a hammer. It's got to be spoken and spoken and spoken, and it'll break the hard place, and it'll be fire that burns up the chaff. Hey? Praise God. That's what it does. And you know, the Holy Ghost has been blowing in this place. The wind's blowing again. Praise God. The wind's always blowing in the house of God. You know that? And the sword of the Spirit is what we need to use in our homes, and when the enemy attacks you, you get that sword out. When he starts to attack your body, you say, "No weapon formed against me shall prosper; every tongue which rises against me in judgment, I shall condemn; for this is the heritage of the Lord. I condemn every spiritual attack. Every thought from the enemy that's coming against me, I command you to cease and to cease." Amen? Yeah. And then you start speaking the solution at the problem, because God gave us the Word. It's the solution. The Word is the solution. The Word works, but if you don't work it, it won't work. That's why it says, "Work out your salvation with fear and trembling." Everybody wants everybody else to work out their salvation, but God says, "You work out your salvation." Have you ever noticed you got prayer for a thousand, a thousand times or something, and nothing happened? Maybe it's time for you to go to God. Because I can anoint you and wear all the hair off your head, and nothing will happen. Maybe it's time for you, because sometimes the grace isn't there. It's time for you to rise up and use the sword of the Spirit, which is the Word of God. Amen? Praying always. Prayer means communication. That means orders from headquarters. That means we can talk to God. My sheep hear my voice. I know them. They follow me. We follow the voice of God. When the enemy lies, we don't follow his voice. We follow God's voice. We cast down his thoughts. We resist him because we're following the good shepherd. He leads us into good grazing ground. He does good things for us because God is good. Amen? I know I'm fast-tracking a bit, but praise God. God wants you to hear his voice. Sometimes you need to pray about things and what you're supposed to do in certain situations and circumstances. Some people tell everybody all their problems, but they don't tell God. Communicate with God. You have a open communication with God. He's never too busy for you. I remember I had a guy, a street guy. He got saved, and he was coming to church all the time, and I told him, "You know, the Bible says, 'My sheep hear my voice. I know them. They follow me.'" And I said, "You start reading the Bible every day, and you'll heal the voice of God." Oh, he came into the Bible study Wednesday morning after about a month or so. He goes, "Yeah, well, you know, everybody's there." "Yeah, well, you said God would speak to me if I read the Bible every day. I've been reading it like you said, and I haven't heard nothing yet." I said, "Really?" I said, "Did you read the Bible today?" And he goes, "Yeah, I did." I go, "What, you know, what chapter?" He says, "Whatever." I said, "Now, was there anything jumping out at you in that chapter?" He goes, "Oh, yeah, this and that." I said, "God was speaking to you!" Hello? He got revelation. Amen? Because sometimes he's speaking, but we're not listening. Sometimes he's speaking through the preacher. Sometimes he's speaking through your children. Sometimes he's speaking through your wife. Sometimes he's speaking through the grocery clerk. Sometimes he's speaking through the lost. Amen? We need, he who has an ear, let him hear what the Spirit says. You know, we need Jesus. He's our hope. He's our, He's the one that saves us. I couldn't save you. Nobody can save you. Only Jesus can. And I'll tell you one more thing before I close out. A lot of people don't get healed because they don't deal with their issues, and that comes from communicating with God. You come and get prayer, but you've got all this ought in your heart. You know that? And nothing happens because you're not dealing with this. No prayer, no pastor can repent for your sin. You know that? No pastor can. And that's why you'll see people go from one place to the other over and over, getting prayer, and nothing's happening because they haven't dealt with the issues that they have. Amen? Then they'll blame everybody else. Satan, have you blaming everybody else? But you won't. You know, sometimes I start blaming my wife, and I start pointing the fingers. God goes, "No, no, no. It's you, not her." Somebody got a ding-dong out of that one. But that works both ways. Hello, somebody? Amen? I'm not blaming anybody. I'm taking ownership of, I got enough to look after right here. Amen? I'm no man's judge. I'm not judging anybody. I used to do that. I don't do that no more. I learned. God told me, "You do the love, and I'll do the judge." And I said, "Okay. Sounds good to me." Amen? Praise God. I'm going to close out there. Now, I want to just pray a prayer with you all, because I promised you I would, and if you don't know Jesus and you're here, tonight's your night. Amen? Tonight's the night, and you need Jesus. He's the one. Anyway, I want to just take a moment, and let's pray. If you're here and you don't know Jesus, He loves you. He's not mad at you. Every hang-up was hung up 2,000 years ago. Amen? He took it all. He did it all. We sang songs about what He did, and it's true. And the Holy Spirit is here. He loves you. He's wooing you. He's drawing you. Amen? And if you're not where you should be with God, that's easy, too. Just be sincere and ask Him to forgive you, and He will. He'll release you. Amen? Because He wants to be reconciled to you. He loves you. And let's just corporately say, "Father, forgive me of my sin. Wash me with Your blood. Cleanse me of all unrighteousness. I give my life to You. You're my Savior. Fill me with Your Spirit. Take my life. I give You my future." Thank you for the Holy Spirit, leading me and guiding me into all truth. I'm born again. I'm saved. I'm going to do what's right and pleasing unto my Father in heaven, in Jesus' name. Amen? Now, I said I wanted to do a corporate prayer with you, and I'm going to right now. And it's a prayer that I pray periodically, and it's about breaking curses and casting off any generational ties. Amen? And it's a powerful thing, and it's important. So I want you to pray with me and repeat after me as well. It's nothing kooky, nothing strange. It's truth. Okay? Because your ancestors, too. You know, something, nothing's in you, it gets on you, and it needs to be broken off of us. That's what it is. Christian can't be possessed, amen? But they can be oppressed. Amen? And there can be things, I could go on. I never got to the point that I wanted to about spirits. There's so many spirits, hereditary spirits and that. I've known people that were liars, and they became pathological liars. And I know people that, you know, the spirit of suicide got on them. Their father committed suicide. The son committed suicide, and now the children are contemplating suicide because there's a spirit there that is trying alcoholism, drug addiction. It goes on and on. Pornography. I know families that share pornography together, whole families, kids, grandkids. Disgusting. I know families that are drug dealers that all sit around with all their drugs, whole families, grandparents to grandchildren. You know? And that's a curse that's come upon them, illicit gain and addiction. Okay? So we're going to repeat this prayer, okay? Let's stand to our feet, because this is going to be liberating. It's going to be liberating. Trust me. Praise God. You know something? I've had people, I prayed this with different people, and they've come to me and said, "Man, I'm free." Amen? Because by faith, they believe what they're praying. Amen? And it's the Word of God, and that's what we're going to do. So repeat what I pray. "Christ hath redeemed me from the curse of the law, being made a curse for me; for it is written, 'Cursed is everyone that hangeth on a tree,' that the blessing of Abraham might come upon me, a Gentile, through Jesus Christ, that I might receive the promise of the Spirit through faith." Galatians 3:13 is flowing through my bloodstream. "Thank you for the blessing of Abraham on myself, my family, in Jesus' name. I live under the bloodline blessing of Abraham." The blessing comes in through Jesus Christ. "I receive again today on myself and my family the bloodline blessings of Abraham because of Christ." The Bible says, "I am the Lord thy God, am a jealous God, visiting the iniquity of the fathers upon the children of the third and fourth generation of them that hate me, and showing mercy unto a thousands of them that love me and keep my commandments." Lord, I thank you for showing your mercy upon my children and myself and my children's children. I am redeemed from the curse of the law. I break all generational curses of pride, lust, perversion, rebellion, witchcraft, idolatry, poverty, rejection, fear, confusion, addiction, death, and destruction. Over my life, in Jesus' name, I command all generational spirits that have come into my life during conception, in the womb, in the birth canal, through the umbilical cord, to come out and be dismissed of assignment in the name of Jesus Christ. I break all spoken curses of negative words of death that have been spoken over my life in the name of Jesus. I break all spoken words of death or curses that have been spoken over my life by others, including those in authority, in the name of Jesus Christ. I command all ancestral ties, spirits of Freemasonry, idolatry, witchcraft, false religion, polygamy, lust, perversion, to come out of my life in Jesus' name. I command all hereditary spirits of lust, rejection, fear, sickness, infirmity, disease, anger, hatred, confusion, failure, and poverty to come out of my life in Jesus' name. I break the legal rights of all generational spirits operating behind the scenes of my life. I dismiss every curse in the name of Jesus Christ. You have no legal rights to operate in my life anymore. I'm a child of God in Jesus Christ. I bind and rebuke all familiar spirits, spirit guides that would try to operate in my life from my ancestors in Jesus' name. I renounce all false beliefs and philosophies and rudiments of men inherited by my ancestors in the name of Jesus. I break all curses on my finances from my ancestors that cheated or mishandled money for selfish gain in the name of Jesus Christ. I break every ancestral curse of sickness and disease and command all inherited sickness and every spirit associated to sickness to leave my body now in Jesus' name. I am the blessed in God. God said, "I will bless those who bless thee, and I will curse those who curse thee, and in you all the families of the earth shall be blessed." I renounce all pride inherited from my ancestors in the name of Jesus Christ. I break all oaths, all vows, all packs made with the devil by my ancestors in the name of Jesus Christ. I break all curses by agents of Satan spoken in my life in the secret in the name of Jesus. Death and life are in the power of the tongue. And those who love it will eat its fruit. I break all written curses that would affect my life, my wife, my family, my ministry in the name of Jesus Christ. I break every time-released curse that would activate in my life as I grow older in the name of Jesus Christ. I break every curse spoken against my life in the name of Jesus Christ. Every curse spoken against my life will be turned into a blessing. Because all things that work against me end up working for me in the name of Jesus Christ. You can't curse that which is blessed. How shall I curse that whom God hath not cursed? Or how shall I defy whom the Lord hath not defiled? And we know that all things work together for the good to those who love God, to those who are called according to His purpose. I break all generational curses of rebellion that would cause me to resist or grieve the Holy Spirit in the name of Jesus Christ. No weapon formed against me shall prosper. And every tongue which rises against me in judgment, I shall condemn. This is the heritage of the Lord, of the servants of the Lord. And their righteousness is from me, says the Lord. For by thy words thou shalt be justified, and by thy words thou shalt be condemned. Ephesians 4:27 says, "Neither give place to the devil." Father, if I have given place to the devil, known or unknown, please forgive me and release me in Jesus' name and make me aware in the future of his wiles by the power of the Holy Spirit. For all that is in the world, the lust of the flesh, the lust of the eyes, the pride of life is not of the Father, but is of the world. Father, I renounce the lust of the eyes, the lust of the flesh, the pride of life. Please forgive me, Father, for yielding to these strategies of the enemy in ignorance, in any way, shape, or form, that would attempt me to hold me in bondage, in Jesus' name. You said, "If we confess our sins, he is faithful and just to forgive us our sins and cleanse us from all unrighteousness." Thank you for the forgiveness of confessed sin through your shed blood. Therefore, submit to God. Resist the devil, and he will flee. I choose to submit to God, my heavenly Father, in Jesus' name. I overcome Satan with my faith in my Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ, who overcame Satan and his fallen kingdom of darkness. And they overcame him by the blood of the Lamb and the word of their testimony. And they loved not their lives unto death. I overcome Satan because of Jesus and my faith in his redemptive work. And my testimony is what he has done. For whatsoever is born of God overcometh the world. And this is the victory that overcometh the world, even our faith. Who is he that overcometh the world? But he that believeth that Jesus is the Son of God. I'm going to live victorious, and I'm going to die victoriously. I'm going to live long, and I'm going to live strong. Lord, I thank you for traveling mercies wherever I go, in Jesus' name. In my car, walking, by land, sea, or air travel. Bless the Lord, ye his angels, that excel in strength, that do his commandments hearkening unto the voice of his word. Thank you, Father, that angels obey your word as it is spoken, in Jesus' name. The angel of the Lord encampeth round about them that fear him and deliverth them. I invite angels to worship with me in my home, in my church, to associate with us and protect us all the day long in the way that I take, by land, sea, or air, in Jesus' name. For he shall give his angels charge over me to keep me in all my ways. You have appointed angels to keep me, and I thank you for that, in Jesus' name. Thank you for 24/7 angelic protection. Bless the Lord, ye his angels, that excel in strength, that do his commandments hearkening unto the voice of the Lord. Angels obey the word of God, in Jesus' name. Angels bring favor on my behalf, in Jesus' name, for the will of God to be accomplished in my life. Are they not all ministering spirits sent forth to minister for them who shall be heirs of salvation? Behold, I send an angel before thee to keep thee in the way and to bring thee into a place which I have prepared for you. Thank you that you have, we have traveling mercies wherever we go and angelic assistance through this fallen world in the mighty name of Jesus. Hakabatito mosabayate. Just start to thank the Lord, praise the Lord. We prayed the Word tonight. Angels have been dispatched. The Holy Spirit is moving on your behalf. Generational ties have been cut. Things have been severed in the spirit. Hallelujah! Shaka matito. God says his word will never return void. It always accomplishes that which it is set to do. Chamando bokatiate. Thank you, Father, that our families are blessed. Thank you, Lord, that our church is blessed. Our children are blessed. Our ministries are blessed. Thank you that everything we put our hands to is blessed. Thank you, Lord, that we're a blessing. We've been called to be a blessing. You blessed us to be a blessing. And we thank you, Lord, that we live in victory, in Jesus' name. We live victoriously, in Jesus' name. We rule and reign in one Christ, Jesus. Hallelujah! And we will succeed in all that we put our hand to. The will of God will be accomplished in our lives. Thank you for liberty. Thank you for freedom. Thank you, Lord, the devil has no hold on us, in Jesus' name. We are free. And whom the sun sets free is free indeed. We are free indeed, Jesus. We thank you. Shaba katamama labote. Come on, give the Lord a clap offering. Give the Lord a clap offering. Give the Lord praise. Give the Lord praise. Come on! Hallelujah! Give the Lord praise. Thank him. It is finished. It is finished. Thank you for healing. Thank you for healing. Thank you for the severance. Thank you for new beginnings. Tomorrow's a new beginning. Thank you that we walk in new beginnings. You said, "Repent and be converted that the times of refreshing may come from the presence of the Lord." Thank you for a time of refreshing in each of our lives. Thank you for healing. Thank you for health. Thank you for longevity. Thank you for wealth. Thank you that we prosper in every area of our lives. Thank you that we're surrounded by grace and mercy. Thank you that favor surrounds us like a shield. We're always in the right place at the right time doing the right thing. Thank you, Lord, that favor comes to us like a magnet. Thank you, Father. Thank you, we have favor when we go out. We have favor when we come in. Thank you, Lord. Kurabasaki moka baba yande. Rama shabala bobo yate. Praise God. Praise God. Praise God. Thank you, Lord. Thank you, Lord. Kunda baba kiti. Let the Holy Spirit minister to you. Let the Holy Spirit minister to you. Thank you for confirming the Word, Lord. Thank you, Lord. Thank you, Jesus. I hear the breaking of chains. Jesus, you've triumphed again. Something's happening to me. Hallelujah, I'm free. I hear the breaking of chains. I hear the breaking of chains. Jesus, you've triumphed again. Something's happening to me. Hallelujah, I'm free. I hear the breaking of chains. I hear the breaking of chains. Jesus, you've triumphed again. Something's happening to me. Hallelujah, I'm free. I hear the breaking of chains. Hallelujah, here's an old one for you. I'm gonna sing, sing, sing. I'm gonna shout, shout, shout. I'm gonna sing, I'm gonna shout. Praise the Lord! When those gates are open wide, I'll be there by Jesus' side. Gonna sing, I'm gonna shout. Praise the Lord! I'm gonna sing, sing, sing. I'm gonna shout, shout, shout. I'm gonna sing, I'm gonna shout. Praise the Lord! When those gates are open wide,